District Three trustee Quentin Phillips.
Good evening, President Ramos. You Phillips here, representing District Three.
Great, good to see you, sir. District Four trustee Daphne Brookens.
Good evening, President Ramos. It's Daphne Brookens, representing District Four.
Good, thank you. District Five trustee CJ Evans, I don't think she's going to be joining us tonight. Okay, District Six trustee Daphne, I'm sorry, um, Ann Dar.
Good evening, President Ramos. This is Ann Dar, representing District Six.
Great, thank you. District Seven trustee Norman Robbins.
Good evening, President Ramos. This is Norman Robbins, representing District Seven.
Thank you, sir. District Eight trustee Ana Luevenos.
Good evening, President Ramos. Ana Luevenos, representing District Eight.
Good, good to see you, sir. And I don't think that trustee Paz is going to be joining us. Just in case, trustee Paz. Okay, and I am District One trustee Jacinto Ramos Jr., and I am here to oversee the board meeting today. Um, on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, uh, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended certain open meetings requirements imposed by the Open Meetings Act to slow the spread of COVID nineteen. This action permits meetings subject to the Open Meetings Act to be hosted by telephone or video conference. This workshop is being broadcasted live via Spectrum, Charter Channel one ninety-two, the Fort Worth ISD live channel on YouTube and a link provided in in the agenda. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following: Notice of this workshop has been posted for at least seventy-two hours. Number one, although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum present and an attendance at this workshop by video conference or telephone call. We are meeting by use of Zoom via software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public as we would at any in-person meeting. Members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. Uh, four, all other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. Number five, an audio recording of this workshop is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. Number six, we apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. And number seven, if you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of Attorney General at eight 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 six seven two six seven eight seven or by email at T O M A at O A G dot Texas dot gov. We will now move on to public comment. Um, I will just check real quick with staff. Do we have public comment at this time?
Mr. Ramos, uh, this is Clint Vaughn. There are no, uh, people enrolled to speak, to address the board this evening.
Thank you, sir. So we will skip over that section of our agenda. We will move on to reports and presentations, which is, uh, budget update. Dr. Scribner, will you introduce our CFO, Michael Ball, for our presentation?
Thank you very much, uh, President Ramos and members of the board and our school community. Tonight, uh, we have an update on the budget that we are preparing for the board to consider later this spring, uh, for the next fiscal year. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Chief Financial Officer, Mike Ball, who will take us through his presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner, President Ramos, members of the board. It's a privilege to be with you tonight and give you a little update on, pardon me, on how we, how we think we'll finish the current fiscal year and then a sort of a preliminary outlook um, at, at the, the budget, as Dr. Scribner indicated, that we'll be presenting, uh, in, in the next sixty days or so. And so if we could advance the slides, uh, really, I think I covered that one and, and then go on one more, we could. So we wanted to, we want to start out by giving the board a, a little bit of an update on, on where we think we'll finish the current fiscal year. And there's, there's a, I've got four, uh, significant events listed here that that it, it's difficult to talk about how we would finish the year without mentioning, uh, each of these items because all of them are fairly significant items. Um, and the, the first of those is, as, as, as you know, the, the revenue, but in the Texas school funding system is really based on, um, attendance. It's, it's, uh, a variation of just an average daily attendance calculation that drives funding. Well, as you know, uh, our enrollment has decreased by about six thousand students uh, since the, the previous school year. And so that's a, that's a reduction of about seven percent. And obviously, if, if, if our enrollment declines, so does our attendance. And so that means that our revenues are down, uh, by, by about seven percent for the current fiscal year. And, and so can't, can't really talk about the twenty twenty-one, uh, fiscal year without, without at least mentioning that. That is a significant issue for us, obviously. The other thing is the, uh, the, the voter-approved tax, uh, ratification election that occurred in November where the, the community, uh, went to the polls and, and provided support for the district uh, moving forward, uh, to, to augment the uh, the three things, uh, teacher compensation, uh, safety and security and, and connectivity. And so obviously, that, uh, that successful election has, has generated some additional revenue. The other, the third thing that's listed here is hold harmless funding. And what that's really talking about is the state's commitment to continue to provide funding, uh, based on attendance, but hold us harmless for that loss that I, that I mentioned previously that's, that I think anyone would agree is attributable to the pandemic. And what we're seeing across the state is that other districts are in, in the same situation. They are, all of our peer districts are, are experiencing similar, uh, declines in enrollment and therefore attendance and therefore funding. And so it's just been within the last thirty days or so that the state has, has actually firmed up the commitment to to provide districts that funding for this year. There are some strings attached having to do with the, the district's attendance in the last six weeks of the year. Uh, but, but there is that hold harmless funding, which would have, which would have made a significant impact on the district's current year, uh, were it not in place. The other thing, yeah, the last thing mentioned here is the is the federal revenues that, that are provided to us through the, the coronavirus relief fund. And that's some that's already been provided. This is some reimbursement for some devices that, that the district has purchased. And we'll talk more in depth about the, the uh, federal funding in, in a upcoming slide. So if we could advance the slide on that, uh, that's sort of the revenue outlook for the, the current year. And then our, um, our spending is, is below levels that we had budgeted for the current year simply because our our, um, our building occupancy is less than, than a hundred percent. And that just translates over into all kinds of things, uh, where our, our spending is not at the levels uh, at which we had budgeted. And so we'll, so we'll have a little more revenue than we had expected and a little less expenditure than what we had expected. And so the, the projection that we're, we're before you tonight to provide is that we're anticipating that when we get to June thirtieth and, and all the uh, accruals are done and all the year-end adjustments, that we'll, we'll finish the year adding somewhere between forty million and sixty-five million to our fund balance in the general fund. And so that's kind of where we, where we see the, the twenty twenty-one fiscal year ending. And so if we could advance the slide, we'll, we'll look at um, some things that are going to impact our budgeting for next year. And the one is, and I don't want to just belabor the point, but, but this, this, uh, this slide gives you the exact numbers that we've, that, of the enrollment decline. But we've already talked about that a couple of times. And so the, the point of this slide is the correlation between the enrollment and the number of staff full-time equivalent positions. And so you can see there that we, we lost six thousand thirty-three students, uh, in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year over the previous year. But we only reduced our number of FTEs by about two hundred and twenty. And, and just by way of comparison, and please don't, don't take anything from those numbers at the bottom other than just for comparison. But if you take about sixteen of our elementary schools would make up six thousand students. And it takes about seven hundred and forty-five employees to serve those six thousand students on those sixteen campuses. And we, in, in one of our slides that we showed our staff, we, we compared a, a district, a neighboring district that has about six thousand students. And they, their total and total staff FTEs are about seven twenty-five. That includes everybody. Uh, and so the point of this slide is to say that we've got to right-size our staffing with enrollment. As our enrollment declines, we've got to, we've got to right-size our employee full-time equivalent count. And so that's really the, the message from, from this slide. And and what we've recognized as a, as a leadership team is if, if you assume that it takes seven hundred and forty-five employees to serve these six thousand students, it's really not realistic for us to think that we could reduce seven hundred and forty-five employees in one year without having some draconian impact in a negative way to our kids. And that's not what we're about. So, so we're, what, what our goal is, is as we right-size our, our staffing, is to make it a multiple-year project so that we're, we can do it through attrition so that we don't have a, a negative impact on students. So just know that that's our goal as, as we work through this process. Uh, if we could advance the slide, we, we've got a little graph that just shows the the relationship over time to enrollment and staffing. And the, the red line on this graph is the staffing and the blue line is, is our enrollment. And the good news is our our, uh, staffing line is, is going down as it should with declining enrollment. It's just not going down quite as rapidly as the enrollment is. So that's really the takeaway from that slide is that is that there, there's that relationship should be somewhat, uh, parallel there, if you will. And so if we could advance the slide, we'll, we'll talk about some, some factors that, uh, really impact next year's revenue as we're, as we're making our our revenue, uh, estimates for, for next year. And I would like to stop and take an opportunity to to recognize David Johnson. He's, uh, he's up in the nosebleed section here, but, but David does a lot of work in, in uh, doing some complex calculations and does a great job of projecting our revenues. And so I've, I've got to tip my hat to David uh, for the work he does there. But as, as we've said already, um, it, it impacted this year already and it's going to impact next year uh, the revenues that we will have available for the, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Uh, that, that decline in enrollment, uh, is, is also going to affect next year. So we've we've built that into our, uh, into our projections. The other thing that's worthy of mention is that the, the local funds or the general fund is, is based on, um, students in seats in, in attendance. The federal funding, uh, the traditional federal funding that we've had for a number of years, the Title One, Two, Three, and Four, those are also uh, enrollment-driven. So when, when we're going to see a decline in, in our local funds, we probably will see a decline of, of a similar proportion in our federal funds. And so we, we have to mention that. Uh, the also, we're assuming, uh, that, that the current law is what will be applicable to the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year because that's really all we have to work with at this point. Uh, everybody knows the legislature's in session. So that may or may not be a, a a good assumption, uh, as we, as we enter into the beginning of that fiscal year. But for now, that's the best we can do is assume the law as we know it will remain in effect. And we also are aware that there is no commitment. We have the whole harmless commitment for the current fiscal year. But there's no commitment at the state level to continue that funding into the, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. And so uh, we're, we're basing our projections on the fact that the formulas as they exist today will just, whatever funding they generate, that's what we'll have and that there will not be any whole harmless funding. The other thing that's a bit of uncertainty is there's been no decision that we're aware of at this point on whether or not there will be funding for virtual instruction next fiscal year. And so that, that's a, a fairly significant uncertainty uh, that's before us as we try to put numbers together on the revenue side for the budget. And then the last bullet on this slide has to do with the federal, um, the federal funds. There's really been three rounds of funding for the, uh, COVID nineteen relief at the, at the federal level. The first round occurred last year, uh, I, in, in the, the district got twenty-nine million dollars in federal funding, but the, the state offset that dollar for dollar with their own obligation to fund public schools in Texas. So what happened to Fort Worth ISD and most other, uh, districts in the state is that we didn't get any more money. What we got was an increased, uh, administrative burden in that we, now we have to share a portion of that funding at the federal level with the private schools in, that are within our district. And so now our grants department sort of serves as the procurement department for many of these, uh, private schools across our district. And so not, not any additional funding, but a, a fairly significant administrative burden that came with that. And so I mention that because the, that's, that's what's called the S R one funds, the S R two and three rounds. The round two was, was, has already been released and made available to the states. The last information I had, uh, actually, I, I believe it was this morning I heard this number, that, that forty-four of, of the other states in the United States have already released the, the funding to their districts in addition to whatever uh, their state funding system would generate for districts. Our state has not yet made the decision on how they will if they will release those funds to the districts and if so, how. Some of the information that we're hearing through some of our, uh, legislative sources is that there's, there's a, there's a line of thinking that's, that's being kicked around a, a bit in the legislature about can a case be made that the, that the state has already provided that to districts because of the cost of the hold harmless funding? Some of the device reimbursements that have been made, uh, to Texas districts uh, and, and some things of that nature, some PPE repers, reimbursements that occurred early in the fiscal year. So I, I mentioned these things, uh, to, to, first of all, to, to point out that there's uncertainty around these issues in terms of budget development for the next budget year. But the other thing, the other reason for mentioning these is that now is the time for advocacy in, in Austin to, to try to communicate to our elected officials that it's critical that, that local districts receive these federal funds in addition to the, the formula funding that's already been appropriated by the eighty-sixth legislature for the current year and the eighty-seventh legislature now has the opportunity to appropriate funding based on their formulas for the, the subsequent biennium and then also pass these federal funds on to districts. And the, the, the information we're getting, uh, i- is that there's a, there's a concerted effort on the S R two funds. That's about five point five billion dollars at the state level. Uh, that there's a, there's a concerted effort for them to try to make the case that they've already provided that to us through some of these things I mentioned. The S R three funds, um, were just released about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, maybe in, in early to mid-March. So maybe that's been almost a month now, but uh, the S R three funds, uh, is about twelve point four billion dollars to the state of Texas. And really, it's, it's so new that we don't have any information about what the other forty-nine states are doing. Uh, but but if one can assume that the way the S R two funds have been handled is representative, it's likely that we'll see a, a similar pattern that other states are, are making fairly quick decisions uh, on how they will distribute it to districts and, and Texas is, is not. And so that's kind of where we are. Um, I think the takeaway from, two takeaways from, from both the S R two and the S R three is that there is significant uncertainty about that. And, uh, and now's the time for advocacy. And, and one thing I fail to do is give you the amounts just so you'll have an, an order of magnitude, uh, what we're talking about. The, the first round that we mentioned already was twenty-nine million dollars and, and that's the one the state offset. And, and the second round is a hundred, pardon me, a hundred and twenty-six million dollars and some change. That's the one that forty-four other states have already distributed to their local districts in addition to the, to the formula funding that they have in the respective states. The S R three uh, for Fort Worth ISD would be about two hundred and eighty-three million dollars. Uh, and, and we don't have any data about how other districts are or, or other states are handling that. And the other thing I would say, um, you may see in, in various news media reports and, and various schedules that are floating around, you may see different numbers than the numbers I just gave you because the numbers I just gave you were calculated by a raise-your-hand Texas in their, based on their interpretation of what the federal regulations require. And so what you'll see is you may see other organizations make their own calculations based on how they interpret it because the state has not said how they will do it. So you may see the numbers change, but I think these are very reliable order of magnitude numbers.
And if I may, um, Mike, uh, really want to thank our board for its leadership, but also encourage you uh, to stay engaged on this issue. We have several trustees that are involved in, uh, leadership positions and statewide uh, groups and, uh, several of our staff, uh, serve on, on Texas Urban Council, Texas School Alliance. I know we have School Board Association. This is a critical issue if we're going to be able to, um, begin this year of academic recovery uh, and getting these dollars to schools, um, is essential. Uh, we do not want to see the same kind of uh, uh, supplanting, uh, that took place in the first, uh, phase of S R. We want to make sure those dollars are value-add, uh, to our students. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. Great, great point. So if we could advance the slide, uh, we'll, we'll look at, uh, the, the budget assumptions about expenditures. And as mentioned earlier, uh, we are, uh, trying to right-size our staff. Their, their Dr. Sines and uh, Dr. Panion, Dr. Washington are, are doing a great job working with our campuses to to just right-size the staffing based on the enrollment that, that we have and in doing so in a way that, that has minimal impact on uh, students and also doing it through attrition so that there, there's no one disrupted by this process. And we're, and we're doing it over a, a multiple-year a process as mentioned earlier. So, so that and, and we're, I think that it's important, that second bullet there to, to mention that we are committed to making reductions at the administrative level, uh, equivalent or greater to what we're doing at the campus level because because we're all in this together and, and we've got to, we've got to treat it as such when we're in a budget reduction mode. And, um, the other thing that, to, to note, I think about when you think about, um, administrative, uh, everybody that's in administration, the, the only purpose we, the only reason we exist as employees of the district is to support what goes on at the campuses. And so we, we want to keep that in mind as we, as we develop our budgets. Uh, so the current projection for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year is that we will have a, a, a budget deficit of about the same amount that we expect to add to fund balance uh, for the current year. So about somewhere between forty and sixty million dollars. So we think that, uh, again, depending on what happens to some of these uncertainties that, that are out there, uh, a year from now in June, June of next, next summer, we should be in, in about the same spot we're in today in terms of fund balance. And hopefully by that time, uh, some of these uncertainties will no longer be uncertain. They'll, we'll know what the outcome is. And our hope is that uh, enrollment will also begin to recover because obviously our kids need to be in school. Um, they, they don't come to school to help the budget and we, we recognize that. And so our, our hope is that we'll, we'll get those kids back and it'll, it'll benefit them and it'll help the budget. So the next, the next four slides really are just some, some comparative information that we wanted to show the, the board and the public that, uh, our district really does a great job, uh, in terms of controlling its administrative costs and, and doing a good job at, at the core mission, which is educating and, and providing instruction to students. So this slide really compares our administrative costs to our Texas peer districts. So these are urban and, and urban districts and districts of similar size to us. And the far-right bar there is Fort Worth ISD. And you can see that among the, particularly among the urban districts, um, we, we stack up really well in keeping our administrative costs low. I think you'll, you'll notice that the districts that are that are doing better than us in that regard are all suburban districts. And so uh, they, they likely don't have the same, uh, needs that we do in terms of, of, uh, being an urban district. So the next slide, uh, compares the, the same thing to national peers. And you can see we really stack up well against our, our national peers and um, across the nation, they, many of them just have significantly different, um, different factors that they, that they deal with. But the good news for us is that, that we stack up very well, even comparing to the, our national peers. The next slide shows our uh, instructional costs compared to our, our Texas peer districts. Uh, those same districts where we compared the, uh, the administrative costs. And so we, what this slide shows you is that we're, we're putting the money in the classroom where it belongs. We're supporting instruction of the students that, to which we are, are granted stewardship of each day. And our, our parents trust us with their children every day. And so we're we're spending our money in the classroom. And then the last graph slide there shows, uh, the instruction, uh, compared to our, our national peers. Uh, and again, districts all over the nation have lots of, lots of pressures and cost issues that we don't experience in Texas. So, so we, we do stack up well uh, against our national peers and we're, we're grateful for the uh, the, the great system that, I mean, we're standing on the shoulders of people who came before us and in setting up the system that we have. So, so thank the board for your leadership and in, uh, making these priorities a part of your, your work as, as the, the body that approves our budget. And then the next slide talks about our, our, the assumption we're making uh, on our compensation, uh, for the, for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two uh, fiscal year. And, and we're just beginning the talks about what, what should our compensation plan look like. And the purpose of this is just to provide a bucket of money uh, with the assumption that we would provide some, some sort of, uh, salary increase to our employees. So we've built in two percent into those estimates that, that were just shared with the board. Uh, and that, just to give you a, a, you know, a frame of reference, if, if you want to kind of in your head uh, calculate what different scenarios might look like. One percentage point of, of of salary increase, it costs about seven million dollars. And so in summary, on, on the last slide, I think that it, it's important to to communicate that the, the district is in good financial sta, uh, financial condition. We have a very healthy fund balance. Uh, we do expect the current year results to be, to be very positive. Uh, and we expect next year to be in a deficit situation in a, in a similar order of magnitude Uh, and we expect next year to be in a deficit situation in a in a similar order of magnitude to what the uh the current debt, uh, current uh add to fund balance would be. And then our our right sizing of staffing, we're committed to doing that over a a multiple year process with a minimal impact on students. And the good news is that fund balance gives us time to do that. Then the next slide really just talks about what our next steps are. Uh, we'll bring back some much more specific uh information to the board in May uh for the board's discussion and and direction to us. And then in June, we need to be publishing the notices of the the meeting. We have to do that about two to three weeks in advance. Uh, and then we'll be at the June uh meeting toward in late June, we'll be uh seeking the board's adoption of the budget. And then July 1 is when our uh new fiscal year begins and uh and so that is the the last slide. And certainly, uh, President Ramos be be happy to try to address any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. I think first we have um trustee Dar and just want to want to note that we still have several. So uh, we'll begin with trustee Dar and I see, hold on, I see trustee, and I see trustee Robin.
Thank you, President Ramos, and thank you for that report, Mr. Ball. I, two questions and and or maybe more like comments. Um, first, I we are, I completely agree that we want to make sure that any adjustment to the number of staff in Fort Worth I S D, teacher staff, um, has a minimal impact on students. That absolutely has to be priority. Just immediately below that, I want to make sure it also has a minimal impact on the staff and the teachers as far as, I know that that staff sees that number and it causes anxiety. Um, so any form of communication that can be shared that's honest and above board as far as as staffing for next year with the staff would be appreciated, I know, because this this is their livelihood. Um, can any of the funding that is surplus or that we didn't spend from this year be rolled over into next year? Or is some of that, I know that it depends on the funding source. Sometimes it earmark that it has to be spent by June 30th, or sometimes it can be rolled over into the next school year.
Great question, trustee Dar. The the answer is that that uh really by state law in Texas, each budget year is that the board, the governing body, whether it's a city or a county or a school district uh or other type of entity, that the governing body has the authority to appropriate money for one fiscal year. And by law, the the appropriations lapse at the end of the year and what's left goes into fund balance. And so it sort of does carry over, but not specifically earmarked. And so the money in in this case does not just evaporate, but the budget authority goes away. And so we have to come back to the board uh for authority to spend that money, but the money winds up in our fund balance or our savings account, if you will.
Okay, good to know. Um, and then just one final comment is it just, it infuriates me that we're having to worry that our state is going to supplant the funds like they did in the fall. Um, I've said it before and I'll say it again, the best investment that we as a community can make is in our youth and our children. Period, the end. That is the best investment we can ever make as a community. And I know that if my grandmother said she was going to send me $25 in the mail and my mother said, well, here's your $3 of that because I'm taking part of it out to cover expenses that have already been paid because she bought you lunch and then she took you out for ice cream and then she sent you a birthday present. So really, here you go, here's your $3. I'd be pretty angry about that. Um, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay. Trustee Brookins, that.
I'm just, I'm looking at that number of the decrease of enrollment and that that pretty saddens me that that's a lot of students that we've lost. Um, do we know how, what was the number before COVID? And um, does that also include uh transfer outs as well?
Yeah, I I can uh address some of that, uh, Mike. Uh, we we are looking at that very carefully. Uh, we, like most other large urbans, have seen a decrease in enrollment. Uh, I think more than two thirds of that unfortunately is our youngest learners. Um, as you know, uh, pre K and kindergarten is not mandatory. So during the pandemic, many parents chose to keep their students home. It's our hope that that's a one off, simply a one year phenomenon and and we um recover many of those students. Next year will be a year of recovery. Uh, but um, we're we're going to watch that very, very closely and our percentage decrease is um uh about the same as the other large uh districts in the Texas Urban Councils. Anything else to add, Karen or Mike?
Uh, not other than the actual numbers, Ms. Brookins, are on that slide number five there that shows what what the actual enrollment um in 2019, 20 in October versus what it was this year. Uh, and so those are on slide five, the the specific numbers and but as Dr. Scribner pointed out, there is no um disaggregation, I guess, of that number to show how many of them are what age group. So but but the the total numbers are provided on slide five there.
Okay.
I do want to share, Ms. Brookins, that we did open our pre K registration and Kinder registration on April 1st. Our numbers are looking very strong. Um, we'll email those to the board board uh tomorrow morning. However, we're really happy about um the numbers we're seeing for the initial enrollment and our campuses are doing a fantastic job getting the students back and enrolled for pre K and K, doing some very safe um protocol tours, um inviting our parents in to show them how safe our campuses are and bringing them back in person. So kudos to our campus principals and teachers and staff for doing that. And then, of course, um, also, uh, bar, under Barbara Griffith's leadership and Raoul Penya, just really doing um external networking at events um that we're able to go to and host to really campaign to get our youngest learners back and enrolled in school.
Okay. Um, okay, my, I think my last question, um, so you said that we are not going to have any funding for virtual learning for, if that's next year or the fall? Um, what are we, do we have anything to supplement that in case we have another flux of COVID before August?
Uh, great question, Ms. Brookins, and and that's one of those uncertainties. We we do have funding for virtual instruction through the remainder of the current school year. What's uncertain uh is that the, to our, to our knowledge, the, there's been no decision made about whether or not the state will provide average daily attendance based funding for the virtual students if at all across the state, not just in Fort Worth. And so i- if if the decision is there is no uh average daily attendance based funding, then um that will be a significant issue for us to contend with because um, you know, there there's a fairly significant number of parents today who who have made the decision to to have their students study uh and receive instruction virtually. And so that's one of those uncertainties that that is still there and hopefully uh will become clear sooner rather than later would be our hope.
Okay. You know, in person or virtual or do we just continue on? Is that for another discussion?
Well, no, it's it's a, it's a relevant uh topic, Ms. Brookins. The the traditional system in Texas has always, at least for as long as my, since 1949, I think, is when the, when the system changed in Texas. But um, the system has been based for a generation or two on attendance, children sitting in seats in a, in a school room somewhere. And and that has been, there's nobody currently in the legislature or anywhere else really that's involved in this process who's who knows anything different from that. And so the 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 discussion that that's going on in in the legislature, in Texas uh Education Agency, is how how to provide the the parents who want to make that choice to give them that opportunity, uh, how to fund it if if the decision is made to give them that opportunity and what schools would have the ability to offer virtual instruction. As as we sit here today, the the charter schools have had a a little better opportunity to do that from a funding standpoint than traditional public school districts have had. And so this this hold harmless funding and a mechanism to to provide funding for virtual instruction is new, uh, and it's temporary and it's only good through this year. So hopefully there will be some discussion about that, that that we can, we can be a part of uh as as we advocate on behalf of the students of our district.
Yeah, we we are waiting for additional T E A guidance. Uh, Karen, could you shine some light on that as well?
Sure. We we do have, of course, it's legislative session. We do have some bills up in place around virtual funding. Um, we're constantly, you know, updating, uh, Dr. Scribner meets with the Texas Urban Council every week with the superintendent and they have been going down to Austin, Dr. Scribner himself, as well as Dr. Hina Hosa in Dallas, to really advocate for us to have a choice. Um, you know, our, right now, we are planning um for um both scenarios, um, you know, depending on the funding. However, you know, we are very committed to our teachers that we will not have the same platform for virtual learning. It, um, they have done an amazing, amazing job, but it's been very, very hard on them. And also, it's, virtual um is not for, is not working for all of our students, especially our youngest learners. So as a team, as a district team, as the teacher survey input that is out as well as the parent, um, you know, we're going to bring back to the board our recommendations moving forward, whether with funding or without funding, and we'll be sharing some updates to you in April at our regular board meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
So thank you, administrative team. I I'll add one more piece and thi- this is the importance of working with study associations, the Black Caucus, NASB, that these are the same conversations that we can hit statewide and my colleague will lead into those conversations as well because the state capital advocating for the same topics. Moving on to um trustee Robbins.
Thank you, President Ramos. Um, the 45 to 65 million that's going to be moved into the fund balance, can can you remind us of the current fund balance prior to that happening?
It's it's just north of 200 million, Mr. Robbins. I I should have that exact number on the tip of my tongue, but it it's north of 200 million.
That's what I was thinking. I've always looked at our fund balance as, you know, you don't spend the fund balance on operational expenses because if you do that year after year, it's like eating your seed corn and you end up with nothing. But if all of this 40 to 65 million came from operating efficiencies and operating expenditure efficiencies, it's okay to do that, don't you think, Mr. Ball?
I do think it it, we're in a unique situation, Mr. Robbins. I think what you've said is exactly accurate. That said, um, we we are in a in a historic time in that we're we're dealing with, no no one in our lifetime has has dealt with anything like this. And so I I think that what the fund balance does is it gives us time to make the adjustments needed in an orderly manner.
Right.
Because there's no question, at some point, we have to align our expenditures with our available revenues. And uh, i- if we don't do that, you'll have somebody else in my chair and 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 uh, I don't, I don't want that. So uh, you know, we've got to do that, but the fund balance provides us time to do it in an orderly way. And so it it is sort of a a bridge to get us there and because the the reductions that we're seeing have been fairly drastic. I mean, 7% is is a significant decline in enrollment. And so the the fund balance gives us time to respond to that in a way that that doesn't harm students. And that's what, that's what we believe is 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 our mission is to try to develop a a game plan that will allow us to do that and have a minimal impact on kids.
Agree. Thank, thank you. And also, uh, you mentioned the possibility of a 2% increase in in uh salaries and wages. Uh, and I I hope we can do at least that, but are we also going to still be dealing with stifens at at the schools, at some of the schools, like the Leadership Academy schools?
Got some of the the real life, a little bit of it, but the electronics play in.
You get the question here?
Sure, of course, yeah. Mr. Robbins, um, we are, we're in our phase planning with um Leonard Middle School and Morgan Side Middle School, then of course, our partnership with Jack K Middle School and the San林Academy. So we will be um bringing that as well to the board, just to share as we're going forward for the 2122 school year. And then an update also that we'll be emailing out to you about our teacher incentive allotment, where we're at with the T I A that is supported through the Texas Education Agency. So we have a lot of different initiatives that we're bringing um forward in upcoming school years of the next three year phase in. Very excited about the opportunity for our teachers to um be able to be compensated from a different pay scale.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's that's really important. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
That's all I have.
And next we have trustee Phillips and then we're going to have um trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. Um, so I know that, I know we were able to show the numbers there about being down enrollment about 6,000, and I think this might have been said, but just to make sure, I know we discussed that we were going to have a presentation definitely close to the time about kind of our plan of attack when it comes to, you know, playing catch up, trying to make sure we're righting the ship here and giving everyone where they need to be. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Um, but yeah, so if, I'm very proud of the work that was being done uh about trying to make sure that we were reaching ourselves, families, I know we were doing door uh door knocking, block walking, trying to get, you know, those young people back engaged, trying to find many of them. So um, so with that, I just wanted to make sure that in our plan of action that we have there, that we also incorporate how we plan to continue those endeavors or ramp up or beef up those in some way if if uh, in fact, we're going to do that. I see that'd be helpful as well, uh, to be able to show that aspect. So, um, next, I guess I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly. So it's a possibility, and I know we have a lot of uncertainties packed into this, but it's a possibility that we may be at a 40 to 60 million dollar deficit. If some of these things don't come to fruition in proper light and things like that. Um, but if some of these, like, you know, you mentioned S R two and I think S R three is down the line or something, maybe, or something like that, if some of these do come to fruition and are allotted to the school district, then we would, in fact, be at a operated, operational surplus at that point. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, yes, sir. That that's a great observation, trustee Phillips. We, uh, as I mentioned, the the S R two funding that that some would suggest is would be allocated to Fort Worth I S D is about 128 million dollars. And so if if you assume that 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 were to be provided to us in addition to our our formula funding, we'd be looking at a a a surplus. But I think rather than looking at a surplus, what we'd be doing, and we're already having conversations about the needs that our students have and what we would need to do with that with that funding in order to appropriately serve the students and help them with the catch up that that we all know they need and other other services that we can provide to them to to help them get get to back, get back to where they need to be after this COVID situation. So I I would, I would think that our, we wouldn't be looking at a huge surplus. What we'd be looking at would be a significantly enhanced ability to serve students in our district.
Indeed, indeed. So, I mean, would that be the case? Forgive me, man, I'm not trying to give you ulterior anything, but.
get back to where they need to be after this COVID situation. So, I would think that we wouldn't be looking at a huge surplus. What we'd be looking at would be a significantly enhanced ability to serve students in our district.
Indeed, indeed. So, I mean, would that be in the case? Forgive me, man, I'm not trying to give you ulterior anything, but it will be really helpful because I know there's going to be presented at a later time to the board, kind of even a little bit more specific as far as what the budget will begin to look like. It would be very helpful to be able to see if these things don't come to fruition, this is kind of the budget and how we're going to have to carry this whole thing out. And if we do get the funds that is there, but it was just out of our hands as to whether or not we'll be able to access them. This is our, this is why we would love to be able to operate the school and take them there. That'd be very helpful to be able to see and very helpful for the public to be able to know these are, this is what we're working in this business we happen to make when it comes to that. So, that would be super helpful.
Great. Good observation. We're having those conversations already, trustee Phillips, about what would we do? How could we serve our students if we had some of these funds?
Really appreciate it. Thank you, President Ramos.
You're welcome. Trustee Jackson?
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Ball. It is a historic time for us, I agree. And I just wonder, you know, in 2016, this district began losing student enrollment. And there weren't big adjustments made for employee numbers. They remained static. Were some of those employees kept on because they were grant-funded? Because I think that skews our data somewhat because we have grant-funded employees.
That's a great observation, Ms. Jackson. We do have a significant number of employees who are grant-funded. And so, it's very possible, although I have not looked at the data in that manner, would be happy to and report back, but that's certainly a reasonable possibility in those years.
Well, it was trustee Dara that made me think of it because she said, you know, it makes people fearful. They don't know if there are going to be jobs that are discontinued for lack of a better term. And I think that we need to look at the fact that some of the attrition has occurred and we were fortunate to have grant-funded positions. So, looking forward for this administration, what is your plan with regard to attrition? Are we going to look at not filling positions or how does that look? I mean, to me, with 12,000 employees, that's got to be a big puzzle.
It is, Ms. Jackson, but this actually, today started our secondary staffing meetings where we're meeting with principals individually last couple of weeks, Dr. Penney in elementary. And that's just our campus level, but then we're doing those meetings as well as with department. And we do have some vacancies and then we have retirements, we have resignations, and we will always, through attrition, take those positions so we're not impacting our employees that are currently under contract with us. Now, of course, grant-funded, you know, employees, it could be that we no longer are receiving that funding through that grant. So, I mean, that is part of being, you know, through having a program funded through a grant. And we do notification, communication, of course, all of those employees, we encourage them to look for a position within our district and our HCM staff under Mr. Spears assists with that, with the facilitation of job fairs and everything else. We have, since we're a large urban district, we have a turnover, a large turnover through attrition for multiple reasons. And we always support our staff and we want to try to make sure we take care of all of our employees. I mean, let's be honest, especially over the last year and a half through this pandemic, we've supported them and they supported our students. And so, that is our goal. However, you know, we do have some federal funds that we will see a decrease in them. So, we will have to eliminate some programs and make some choices.
And if I may, a final thought, trustee Jackson, is that we, in fact, do have a roadmap with our efficiency study that was presented to the board a year or two ago and has been implemented since that date. So, we are, as Mr. Ball indicated, going to be phasing in our rightsizing so that we don't negatively impact the campus and students.
Right. Thank you. So, there is a huge prospective plan that began over two years ago with the study, the efficiency study. So, this is not new news. You all have been working on this.
That is correct.
Thank you. And then, the last thing is, when we compare to other districts, you alluded to this, Mr. Ball, with regard to the cost of living in the other districts and other things, you know, it will be interesting to look at attendance in those districts as well, since that is the one commonality we have with regard to revenue stream. So, that would be helpful. I don't know how easy that is for us to get. I think Ms. Molinar has told me before, sometimes we can't get that. But it would be really helpful to see how the other urbans are doing there because that is our one revenue stream we can count on. Thank you.
Absolutely, Ms. Jackson. We have anecdotal data, you know, just in the, I was in a meeting today for a couple hours with peers from all across the nation in the Council of Great City Schools and while I can't quote you the numbers, but I can tell you the conversation was, everyone across the nation is in a similar situation that we're in. And whether we can get current, we know we can get historic data. It's the current data that is difficult sometimes to acquire because, like in our case, we haven't even reported our own data yet, much less trying to find someone else's data. Our data is reported in the June summer pin submission for attendance and enrollment. And so, any other district in Texas is on that same timeline. So, that's why it becomes difficult to obtain data from other districts that's very current.
Right. But I think the data that you demonstrated today had to probably be from last year for those districts with cost per student and those things. So, maybe it's...
It's not this year's data, that's correct.
Yeah, so maybe it's possible, but anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, trustee Jackson. Next, we have trustee Luevanos.
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you, Mr. Ball, for this point. Can we go back to slides nine and 10?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, if I'm seeing this right, for us, we have under $200 or between 2 and 250, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And then, if we go to the next slide, so on this one, same theme, we have almost to 1,000. So, can you explain the difference on how this data was?
Absolutely. That's a great observation, trustee Luevanos. The reason for the difference there is because we're comparing, using the same criteria. On the Texas slide, we're using the numbers that the state of Texas reports under that administrative category. In slide 10, which is the national peers, the source of that data is the NCES database. And so, they use a different set of accounts to call administrative. And so, we want to use the same ones for us that we're using, that we're showing for the other districts. So, it wouldn't be intellectually sound for us to show just what Texas categorizes as administrative while we're showing the other for the other. So, it's an attempt to compare apples to apples in two completely different systems, but that NCES system is the only one we have access to that gives us nationwide data. And what our hope is, is the takeaway is that we compare favorably with those national peers using the comparable data to compare.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great observation.
Okay. Looks like those are all the questions or comments from the board on those topics. So, we're going to move on to Equity Centered Pipeline Initiative. Dr. Scribner?
Thank you very much, President Ramos. We are extremely excited about an opportunity that has presented itself through the Wallace Foundation out of New York. This is invitation. There are 42 districts who qualify based on their size, based on, excuse me, based on their size, based on the population that they serve with high-need schools. And the Wallace Foundation plans on making eight awards in this competitive grant system. Fort Worth could earn up to $7 million. This is another one of those examples that trustee Phillips was talking about. There are national dollars out there to help us achieve our goals. We would need to partner with higher education institutions and we have chosen two right here in Fort Worth, Texas Christian University and Texas Wesleyan. Also, we need to partner with the TEA, the Texas Education Agency. We already have a letter of support from the Department of Educator Preparation Certification Enforcement. And just this afternoon, I had a conversation with Commissioner Morath, who indicated that he'd be honored to also write a direct letter of support on our behalf. Fort Worth ISD, as I said, is invited to apply for this grant that's focused on Equity Centered Pipeline, Principal Pipeline Initiative that would build upon our principal talent work that is already underway. To take us through this presentation, I'd like to turn it over to our deputy superintendent, Karen Molinar, as she can outline in greater detail the plan. Karen?
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. I'm so excited to share this opportunity that we're applying for. We're very excited as a team. We've had principal input, assistant principal input, as well as district central administration. And so, we'll share the timeline in a little bit. Just a little bit of background about the Wallace Foundation. Hold on one second. Mr. Ball, can you mute real quick? Just a little bit of background about the Wallace Foundation. If you're a part of education, you know Wallace Foundation. They are very, they have a reputation in the education system. They're about research. They are about equity. They are about leadership. They're about teachers. They really are just a great partner and this opportunity could really be a game changer for us. You'll see that the Wallace Foundation has an endowment of $1.6 billion that they strive to just put back into the education pipeline. It's located in New York City. And they're, I'm not going to read you the mission that's on there, but you can see what the mission says. And, but they're partners, they develop, they share, they're evidence-based, practical, effective approaches. And what we love about Wallace is that they're about system. How do you build a system? How do you sustain that system? And we feel like that we're ready for that in Fort Worth ISD and it's needed, actually. You're seeing on the next slide here, this is the principal pipeline strategic approach about developing and supporting principals. We've been doing this work for the past three years. We have brought to you before as to the board about the work we've been doing with the George Bush Institute. And we're very excited about that work. This is our third year, it's our completion year. However, that did not come with funding. That came with support and we definitely appreciated it and we had an advisor. She is still with us and has pushed our work as far as building our principal pipeline, as well as our assessment and how we're hiring and retaining our principals. However, this approach will really, we want to continue the work. We don't want to stop just because our three years with the Bush Institute is concluding. This will be a systemic approach, not just for principals, but for sitting assistant principals and then tapping our next leaders as teachers into this leadership pipeline. The next slide you'll see is a central question about the goals and initiatives. And this grant is really exciting because even the name of the grant is Equity Centered Pipeline Initiative. And of course, we are ready for that in Fort Worth. We've been doing our equity work, but we need to go deeper. It has to go deeper, has to impact our students, it has to impact our classroom. And of course, our leaders do the most work to do that. You're going to see here in the ecosystem, there's seven domains that are outlined. Look at domain two where it says high-quality pre-service prep. This is what Dr. Scribner was describing, like when you partner with two universities, TCU and Texas Wesleyan, we want to make sure that we are aligned about what are our thoughts? What's our goals? What does equity mean for Fort Worth? Does TCU have that same definition? Does Texas Wesleyan? What does it mean to be an instructional leader with an equity lens? So, we wanted to pick two partners that we can work and collaborate together. And we actually, yesterday, we were on a webinar and TCU joined us and we had this conversation with the TCU faculty. And we said, we want our definition of racial equity and equity-centered instructional leaders to be part of your prep program. It has to be aligned, it has to be the same. It can't be where you're prepping and then they come into our institution and they're not able to put those in practice or they're not aligned to what the work we're doing here through our own department. The next slide you'll see, why Fort Worth ISD? So, when we received this invitation, got very excited and Lisa Enzar, most of you know Lisa Enzar on here, I like, she's my go-to. I said, Lisa, read it and just tell me like, I feel like this is us. And they're asking us to apply. Lisa read it, we were talking and then we took it to our leadership team because this is not where you apply for a grant and it sits in grant and you get the money. This is a game-changing grant for instructional leadership in this district. You'll see that it had to be a large district with 48,000 students enrolled. Of course, we meet that criteria. High-need schools, we have more than five, let's be honest. And then, a superintendent we know has at least two years of being supported and is not leaving us. And we know Dr. Scribner fits that. Then you look at the other criteria, you have 42 districts that met, including us, and then there's going to be eight awards as be shared with you. We feel like we have a really good chance to do this because of the work we've already started with the George Bush Institute around the principal talent management. So, what did we do to prepare ourselves for this? You'll see here on the next slide about a mutual learning journey here. And this is why it really spoke to us because they're going to treat us as each district is unique. They're not going to tell us what to do with the grant money. They're making us go through a needs assessment. It's about continuous improvement, getting better, but supporting us to do that work. Also, they're going to allow us to work with the Wallace Foundation. And to us, that is like the creme de la creme to be able to work with Wallace. You'll see that initiative also, they'll do equity audits for us for our district. We'll get to work with the Council of Great City Schools, as well as the National Urban League, and it'll be research-based practices that we can put in place. You'll see the next slide. This is the part, if you remember on the ecosystem, there was seven domains. Domain seven is about systems and sustainability. Well, it's hard to build a system and sustain it without first having some jumpstart money. The districts that complete the entire five years, just our district alone would receive $4 million, just around the work about instructional leadership. And then, each of the partner universities, we receive 1.9. And then, you'll see TEA, as well as being our partner, would receive 440,000. The grant amount for the first year to get us up and started would be 1.8 million dollars in year one. $700,000 for Fort Worth ISD to just talk about equity instructional leadership. You can tell I get excited on this one. My passion. The next slide, here, you see the timeline here and you have February the 5th is when we went and we attended the conference virtually. We submit our letter of intent and then, of course, we met with our consultant. We have a consultant, his name is Dr. Richard Gonzalez. He's from UConn, he's a professor. He does not sway us. He is helping us through the process of a needs assessment and finding what our work is going to be built around. So, here's the exciting part. Thursday, our grant is due. So, we have been working on this since February. It's been a very, very short turnaround, but people have committed the time, our leadership team has committed the time. We've had principals, assistant principals as well that have been participating on multiple, multiple virtual meetings. If, after we do the application, they do the site visits, but we will not know until June 30th if we receive the grant. But you'll see in September, I feel very confident, we're going to... But you'll see in September, I feel very confident we're going to be a winner, and we'll be able to receive the money and start the work around instructional leadership. What does success look like? Well, as I said, it's going to be like all of our key stakeholders, defining equity and then equity-centered instructional leader. It's going to be filling those gaps, the definitions with our partners. It's going to be about a line principal pipeline that will be developed. Each of the seven domains that we showed earlier will be addressed. And then, more importantly, it's going to require change. This is, uh, this is what we're most excited about. As we've been doing the needs assessment, it has come out in like this organic way, what we need to do, what we need to change to support our principals, um, build their capacity. And as central administration, they are our customer, because our principals impact students, they impact teachers. So some of the things, you know, we're going to be excited about is like, we're going to focus on the pipeline, focus on our assistant principals. Right now, our assistant principals, you know, they are our next principals in line. We're not spending enough time with them, growing them, building the capacity, making them instructional leaders, tapping them, you're ready, let's go. Or you know what? Let me help you out. We need to work with you in these areas. How can we be more strategic to make a bench that's full, that we're building their capacity? Also, that came out is, we still need to work with the role of our principal supervisors. They impact our principals on a daily basis, as well as their entire school. So we need to look at that role, and we need to continue to build their capacity as well. The big one is going to be, um, the organizational system, um, that has to put the principals as their customer service first. And that means central administration, all the departments, everything needs to be customer service-based with the principal being the most important customer. That we have to work for them, not them for us. So when I talk about change, this is going to be the opportunity for us to do something different. And it's going to move some people's cheese. Things can look different, departments could look different, because we're going to go all in, and we're going to say, this is a priority for us in our district. Equity instructional leadership pipeline. I like the end, this is just an overview, we wanted to keep you updated. But this slide, and you guys, uh, presented this slide multiple times last week, student outcomes don't change with adult behaviors change, starting with me. So, we saw this opportunity, and we truly believe student outcomes will change if we invest in our leaders on our campus. So I'll take any questions at this time.
I have a comment, I don't have a question. Um, I, I, I'm really happy to see that we are really looking at being innovative, uh, when it comes to, you know, putting our kids first and, and to look at our education through an equity lens. And, um, I'm looking forward to, to hear more about this, this, uh, project as we go on and hope that we do get it. Um, it shows that we are not just, um, doing lip service and that we're actually putting our feet to the pavement. Um, and, and to also see that we have, um, partners that are result-oriented. So I'm excited about it, and I hope it all comes to fruition and that we get it and, um, start, you know, continue to move forward.
Thank you, trustee Brickins, uh, trustee Robbins, I'm sorry, trustee Dar.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. Um, as a trustee, but also as a Fort Worth I S D parent, as a community member, as an educator, is there anything that I can do to help?
Well, I'll let you know when we submit the application. We always appreciate anyone who would like to light the candle, say a prayer, do it, you know? We, we appreciate that. Um, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to say, when we start making some changes and we start maybe looking different in our organization, how we're deploying assistants and how we're building the capacity of our principals about being instructional leaders, there's going to be some uncomfortable, um, you know, it's going to be different professional development. There's going to be the instructional people giving that professional development, being, making them stronger in the instructional leadership. We don't want equity to be only owned by miss breed. It has to be embedded every day, every minute. And that's the real work. But that's what our kids deserve and what they need. And we need to get it into the classrooms, into the schools. So support.
Okay. So I do think, and this is just a comment, I, as, as someone who's been in education for over thirty years, is that there's the false assumption that being an assistant principal prepares you to be a principal. They are very different jobs. And there are also principals who, um, train their assistant principals in very different ways. And, and just because you've been a really good assistant principal doesn't automatically qualify you to be a really good principal. But it also means that just because you're a really good assistant principal, with the training, you could be a really good principal. So I'm glad to see the intentionality. I mentioned it last week when we were doing our town halls, that improvement does not happen by accident, that it has to be intentional, and this is intentional, and this is, um, I appreciate all the work that's gone into, to writing and putting together this grant, because that is no small feat, I am certain. And, uh, make sure you remember that Eastern time on Thursday is really eleven, noon Eastern time is eleven o'clock our time. Because I've been that person that didn't notice the time change. So, thank you for doing all this work.
Thank you, trustee Dar, trustee Norman Robbins.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. I too am excited about the instructional leadership component, uh, particularly with the, with the APs, as well as the principals. So, uh, I think this can pay, play many, many, pay many, many dividends for us. Um, I'm curious, do, do we know who the other forty-two contenders are? Are there other contenders in Texas? Do we have any idea?
They are tight-lipped.
Okay.
And let me tell you, our advisor doesn't give anything away. Um, they are tight-lipped and we're following the process, we're being quick and clean. We want to know too. We can probably guess a little bit, but we, they're definitely not telling us, um, who our contenders are.
We, we were pleased, however, that Commissioner Morath quickly agreed to send a letter on our behalf, so that's a good sign, yeah.
That is good. Uh, well, thank you for pursuing this. Um, I think the innovation component is really significant, and so let's, let's keep doing that, and we're very grateful, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Robbins. Trustee Quinn Phillips.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. Um, so, one, uh, Karen, you're excited, getting me excited, so I appreciate that. Uh, uh, two, I guess, I guess it was, um, could you speak a little bit more to what the partnerships will look like? So, um, Texas Wesleyan, uh, T C U, and then, uh, some of the money would also be awarded P E A, like, so what is the, what would the partnerships actually look like if we were to be grant assistants?
So, that's really the beauty of it. Um, during the last few weeks, we met with T C U and, um, met with Dr. Hernandez and his faculty, and they had to go through a similar process with the advisor as well. But it's really about us, um, designing it together. So we've had a partnership with T C U in the past, where we've had the resident program. But, um, and this was, it was great yesterday, we all were on the same page when we were on a webinar. Uh, we wanted to build it from ground up. We don't want to do what we did, um, because some of our residents have never become principals. So we missed something in that prior partnership. It's time to, um, learn from our mistakes on both sides and say, what can we do differently? So our first step in the first year is really going to be designing, what does it need to look like? What do we need for, from leaders? What can they provide us? Not just the certification, but what do we want to see in the classes? What do type of studies do we want? We want them to have, um, the same, you know, lens when we're talking about racial equity, as well as equity, you know, two different things. So we want to make sure we're on the same page. You know, Texas Wesleyan provides us right now with a great pipeline for our bilingual teachers moving into, um, their students moving into, um, teachers, as well as, now we want to take that and expand it. And like, how can we work that pipeline into bilingual administrators as well? So each, um, partnership for the higher ed is going to look different, it's not going to be the same, because we feel like they each have needs, that they're really strong, or they have, um, strengths that meet our needs, and we need to tap them. But we're going to design it along the way and together. So that's, that's the beauty of it. They're not saying you have to define it right now, that's your first year, is working through that together.
Right, I appreciate that. Thank you, Karen, um, I think Vice President Jackson.
You're on mute, Ms. Jackson.
I am muted, how about that? Thank you. You know, Deputy Superintendent Molinar, you are always saving us, and thank you for that. Um, if there are no additional comments, I believe Dr. Scribner has a couple of words.
Um, Toby, uh, trustee Jackson, yeah, why don't we do that right at the end? I want to say something at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Ms. Jackson, I, I have to say, Lisa Enzar, I have to say how crucial she is to this grant and writing this grant, organizing us, organizing the teams. Um, she's behind the scenes all the time, she's on here right now. Um, like, I don't, we don't take time to praise the people that really help and support us as administrative team, as a A-team. So I have to, like, the, like, even Dr. Gonzalez from Yukon said, he's never seen a district organize the approach the way he's seen this. And that's due to Lisa Enzar. So I have to do that. So I want to thank her for that.
Lisa Enzar, you have a virtual round of applause. And on that, thank you, Ms. Molinar. If there's no additional comments or questions from this board, we want to welcome back Mr. Dale Leighton and his beautiful sunset that he always has in the background as we move into Lone Star Governance.
Ma'am, good evening, Vice President Jackson and trustees from Fort Worth, Dr. Scribner, and my A-team, my administrative team who's joined us this evening. Uh, I appreciate you letting me, uh, get on the agenda for this evening, you know, after we had our last quarterly review. One of the, uh, next steps that our Vision Three team had, had, uh, proposed to the board was to work on board constraints. So I would like to spend a little bit of time talking about board constraints, but also want to talk about the glorious work and what made my heart smile. I had an opportunity to, to watch one of the town hall meetings that took place last week, uh, that we did. I haven't made time to watch all of them, but the one that I watched was, in my opinion, a showstopper. It was really good, good work. In fact, I had to brag on, uh, the board members from Fort Worth with their town hall meetings, and I shared the links out to some of my fellow Lone Star Governance coaches around the state, uh, to look at that. And I got some great feedback, uh, they were in, uh, awe of the work that you did. But I'd like to take a moment or two, just as trustee Dar had mentioned earlier about during one of the town hall meetings, as she was sharing in the town hall meeting that, you know, these changes that we're looking, uh, these behavioral changes, student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And unless we're intentional, there's intentionality behind the work that we're pursuing and focusing on, uh, that's what really will create this behavioral change. Uh, but what I saw, you know, back in December, I think it was trustee Dar and trustee Evans and, and trustee Paz, we were having a team meeting, our advocacy team meeting was together back in, in December. Uh, and one of the questions that came out was, what would an opportunity for two-way communication look like in Fort Worth I S D? And they, they took the ball and ran with it. And I thought, I think what we saw was this first round of town hall meetings, uh, in my opinion, really rolled off well. But I would like to just pause for a moment and, and solicit some reflection from the trustees around those, uh, town hall meetings, the ones that you participated in. Uh, how do you think they went? What do you think we could do better from a coaching standpoint? So I'll know how to support, uh, the advocacy team as we move forward and try to tweak these and make them even better. So I would be quiet for just a moment, and, uh, Vice President Jackson, you call on them in the, in the order that you wish, but I'd just like to hear from the trustees about reflections on the advocacy team meetings, the town hall meetings that we had last week.
Trustee Phillips, would you go first?
Indeed, thank you, Vice President Jackson. Yeah, so as far as, um, my observations from it is, one, um, very happy that we were able to do it, you know, even on the one that I was ever, I was very thankful to trustee Paz, trustee Robbins, and any other of my colleagues about, you know, uh, really wanting that to come to fruition for some time, but we were actually able to execute it to that point. So, um, so it was a long time coming, and I'm glad that we were able to do it, although, uh, in a virtual setting, at least in our maiden board. So that was, that was really cool. And, um, you know, the feedback that I've gotten is, um, appreciation that we were taking that time, uh, to communicate. And, you know, I definitely have been a broken record here, you know, that's the, that's the standard, every meeting, communicate, 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 that's over-communicate, right? So, uh, that was happening with us being able to do those meetings, that's a, that's a beautiful thing, and I'm glad that, um, we definitely on the right track as far as that. As far as improvement that, um, that I would like to see, and there was the first one, and there was so much information that we did, uh, need to get out as far as what it even was in the first place that we were doing, as far as with Lone Star Governance, fighting it. Um, with it, uh, with those forums, as well as any other forums that we do, uh, just more room for the actual question and answer period. Uh, you know, when people do take the opportunity to, whether it be come on virtually with us or when we're back in person and they show up for, for a meeting, and, uh, that's just valuable, to be able to have the literal two-way communication of them asking questions that actually matter to them in their moment, uh, really being able to clarify, uh, you know, some, you know, misconceptions, or even, or even just being able to further explain what it is we mean by certain things or how we're doing. So, uh, it went very well, but anytime we can, you know, lessen the presentation aspect even just a little bit, to make sure that we have more of an open space for the actual Q and A from the community, I think we're always in the proper direction.
Thank you, trustee Phillips, and, uh, move on to, uh, trustee District Four, trustee Daphne Brickins.
I agree with trustee Phillips, um, that open dialogue opportunity, um, I think is something that we, um, can work on for our future town halls. Um, I, I think that, um, because of the numbers that we started getting, um, the more of these we had, the bigger the number started getting of people who were actually logging in. Um, I think we need to continue doing this, even if we decide to come back to school in person, because, um, they have a lot of good questions. And a lot of the times when we're doing the, um, the public comment, they don't have those opportunities to ask those questions and then actually get us, you know, opportunity to get some feedback. So, um, yeah, I think we need to continue doing it, and any way that we can have that, you know, communication and transparency to our community and our stakeholders and our students, um, I think is a plus. So, um, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Brickins. Trustee Dar.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. Um, I thought they were great. I really enjoyed the one hour that I spent, um, participating in the town hall. And one of the things that I really like about the whole Lone Star Governance model is its emphasis on community. Because the collective "we" is not just Dr. Scribner and his leadership team, it's not just "we" the board, it is not just "we" the Fort Worth I S D staff, it is "we" Fort Worth I S D, the community, that has to work together, that has to commit to having better schools. It cannot be done in isolation by a few people, it has to be the greater community. So I really, I've always liked that aspect of, um, the, the Lone Star Governance model and involving the community in this process. I would love to, um, continue these, to do these town halls quarterly. Um, I don't know if we need to continue to break it up by elementary, middle, and secondary. If, if the, if that made a big difference, the community may think it did, and that, and then we need to listen to that feedback. Um, I'd, I'd really like to see a town hall with students. And to add students into the equation, to get the feedback from students as well.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Dar and trustee Robbins.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. I, uh, concur that student input is really, really critical and, and I would hope that we would focus on that as, as much as possible. I would like us, I think it'd be cool if, you know, we ended up in these forums, that the community ended up speaking a lot more than we did. Uh, so maybe we could get something out for them in writing, you know, electronically about what we're going to be talking about. So they'd have some familiarity and we wouldn't have to go through the actual presentations, spend all our time doing that. And then listen to them and respond to them, as was said already, um, you know, that there's a considerable amount of frustration in our, uh, uh, public comment period when we can't answer them. And so this would be a way that I think that would really be fulfilling to the community. And as we all know, we're not going to reach mastery on this, uh, Lone Star Governance until we have community buy-in. And the way that we'll know that we have community buy-in is by doing these forums and let the community tell us that they agree with what we're proposing, or if they don't, what they think we ought to be doing. And, uh, I just think that'd make it a lot sharper and a lot, a lot better. And I look forward to participating in that. I do think, uh, doing it very often is also critical. If, if, if it's not timely, if it's not done often enough, I think it loses momentum and we surely don't want that to happen. So I thought the first one was great. Uh, exceeded my expectations in terms of attendance and so on. So bravo to, to all that put it together. And thank you.
Uh, thank you to all the trustees for your comments just now. And I also want to thank Jennifer Perez for putting those on. It's not easy to disseminate which questions should, are applicable, which ones aren't, uh, putting in, in order as to acuity of need. And she did a really great job. So I wanted to thank her. And Dale, I'll hand it back to you.
Vice President Jackson, did you have any other, uh, maybe some ways to tweak them and make them a little better? I didn't want to cut you off.
I do not. Uh, trustee Phillips, trustee Robbins, Brookins and Dar took all of my thoughts.
Stole your thunder. Well, that, uh, great comments. I made notes on these. So as we move forward, I'll, I'll see what supports I can provide to the advocacy team as they begin to refine these. Now, of course, these were the first ones we ever had. And as trustee Robbins mentioned, they exceeded my expectations as well. Back in December, when we had, I was, uh, actually, uh, about to do a board training for another school district. When we had our team meeting, trustee Dar might remember, I was, uh, doing our Zoom session, a little team meeting from the car out in the parking lot, waiting to go in. And I had no idea what that might look like. And until I saw it come to fruition and, and those videos are still posted on our website. They're just, it's beautiful like, uh, examples of the opportunity. Now bear in mind, it was, it was our first ones, uh, worked out really well. We want to look for ways to refine those and tweak those because much like trustee Robbins had mentioned as well. For us as a board to move forward to the master's focus level of performance and, and be operating in that realm, uh, it, it, it requires us to engage the community and to, uh, have a broad community ownership of our student outcome goals and our constraints and, and all the process that we're using as a governance model to move forward. So, so with that, thank you again. Kudos. Like I said, I shared it with a handful of my closest colleague, Lone Star Governance, to kind of, you know, like brag on my boards that I work with and, and they saw those videos, uh, that I shared with them. Uh, in fact, one of the, my colleagues out in West Texas asked permission if she could share it with some of her boards as well. I said, it's on their website. It's in the public domain. So I guess they could click on it and, and work through it and see, see what it might look like in their and so they may have set the bar for, uh, pretty high already to start with. So thank you for that opportunity to get that feedback. Uh, I didn't want to leave out our A-team members, uh, deputy superintendent Molinar or Dr. Scrivener or any others who were involved in that. Uh, any feedback that you might want to give before we leave this topic and move into constraints? A thumbs up from Dr. Scrivener. Ms. Molinar.
It wa, it was just, um, we, I watched all of them. I know Ms. Griffith, our, our A-team, we're all involved as well as our executive directors. Um, we really enjoyed it too. We like to, we love to see the trustees, um, and, you know, answering the questions. And for us, uh, when we did the board workshop, uh, pre-COVID back at the, um, in February of what year was that? 2020? 2020? I don't even know anymore. I, it really just showed how far we've come as a team. And so it was exciting to see that next step and that next level.
And I was reflecting on the same thing. It's hard, it's hard to believe that February a year ago, we began this journey, or I did, and I began this journey working uh, with this board and that brings us up to tonight. One of the things that we need to do as a next step that was a recommendation coming out of our Vision Three team was to look at board constraints. It's one of the pieces that the pandemic occurred. And so we put that on the back burner. That was just not important work at that time when we were dealing with the pandemic and we're, we're setting up a virtual instruction, taking care of our, our students here in Fort Worth ISD. But now we need to circle back, uh, to the, that component of the integrity instrument and, and have a discussion around our board constraints. Now, you'll remember back in uh, what we did do in order to, to continue doing the work and maintain the momentum, we did go ahead and do our superintendent constraints. Uh, we had talked about constraint, superintendent constraints and adopted those. We also adopted some emergency constraints to temporarily have propped up during this time that we're dealing with this pandemic. Now those are board discretion, those emergency constraints. Uh, I, I shared those with you and I'll remind you, those are just temporary. Until the board feels like we no longer need those constraints. Uh, we, we had our, our, uh, full-time constraints for the superintendent that we had already considered prior to emergency constraints. One of those, we even talked about this evening. With this equity-centered leadership, uh, focus directly aligns to one of the superintendent constraints that, that we have been working through uh, in addition to the emergency constraints during this pandemic. So the one thing to help us to continue our, our momentum in the Vision Three and Vision Four components of the integrity instrument is board constraints. Now with the superintendent constraints, let me contrast those with superintendent constraints. We've, the board has adopted one to five constraints for Dr. Scrivener. And then Dr. Scrivener and the A-team came back with constraint progress measures. That's going to be different than what the board's constraints look like, where the superintendent constraints are aligned to our values. And the constraint progress measures are a way for the superintendent to provide you monitoring reports that we're still working within those constraints that we've identified. Now, the difference for board constraints is that the board constraints do not have constraint progress measures. There're tip, there's typically just a yes or no check and balance type of question. And so in order for us to fulfill, uh, the Vision Three component under meets focus, one of the things that we want to work on tonight, I want to get some input and try to capture some notes to bring back to the board for consideration and eventually adoption are one to five board constraints. Now, the board's self-constraints are those specific operational actions uh, or classified actions that the board places on themselves or members of the board to support the behaviors that keep the board focused on board work, aligned to the mission and the vision and the values of our community. And so with those, uh, I would open it up and see if you've had some ideas or, or have some suggestions around some constraints. Now, one way to kind of think about these constraints is what would be something that this board would put in place as a constraint on other, on our entire board to hold us accountable, that we could hand off to future boards that would help them to be as effective and efficient, um, governing body as you are currently, as you're growing through this Lone Star Governance, uh, model and process. What would be some constraints that you would consider placing on yourselves as board members to hold each other accountable, to maintain this momentum that we have going through Lone Star Governance? Let me just open up the floor and I'll capture some notes.
You know, the, the piece that seems to tell whether or not we're really focused on student achievement is the amount of time that we spend actually working on student achievement. Um, so if we set a really high goal there, uh, that would be, that would be a commitment that, uh, if we didn't make it, we'd, you know, look like we're hikers. So i, 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 if, if we set a, a goal, you know, it'd have to be achievable, obviously. But if it was a really high goal, that would show that we are intent on, uh, on spending all our time on student achievement.
So let me piggyback on that, just to, as we begin to craft these board constraints, uh, items, as we craft the language for the constraints themselves, it's going to be a, a the board shall not spend less than, you know, X number of minutes of time on student outcomes. In our integrity instrument, under the accountability, uh, one piece, what we're doing is we're tracking our time in the board meetings uh, and looking in the structure component of our integrity instrument about how we spend our time in board meetings and, and being cognizant of seeing if we can carve out more and more time in our board meetings to focus on student outcomes and monitoring those goals towards those student outcomes.
Could, could we take that, uh, information and use as a, as a building block? You know, this is where we are now. Uh, this is where we might try to go in the future. Um, and I don't recall the percentages, but I'm, I know we're doing a lot better than we used to, and we want to keep doing better and better and better in that regard. So.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Just to kind of fill in the blanks for you, consistently for Fort Worth ISD over the previous quarters, what we have been noticing is an average of around thirty to forty percent of our time in board meetings over the quarter has been spent focused on student outcomes. Now, the way that looks in our board meetings or the reports uh, that are on our monitoring calendar that our administrative team brings to the board each month, you know, per the monitoring calendar. So we've been averaging between thirty and forty percent on the high end, almost knocking on the door of fifty percent. So just to give you kind of context about how Fort Worth ISD is, and the board is, uh, operating within the board meetings. In the integrity instrument of the thresholds to jump from a, uh, approaches focus to meets focus to masters focus is ten percent of our time spent would put us in the approaches focus. Well, we're already well above that. With us operating between thirty and forty percent of our time focused on student outcome goals, we are clearly above the threshold of meets, which is twenty-five percent of our time. But we're just under the masters level performance of fifty. Now, a caution, before we jump out there and say, let's spend sixty percent of our time, that fifty percent of our time on an average over a quarter is a very aspirational goal for any board to try to carve out that much time out of a board meeting, uh, to spend focused on student outcome goals. Uh, there have only, and, and what I've seen, only been two boards across the state who have consistently for two quarterly reviews been able to maintain fifty percent. So that, that would be an aspirational goal. Right now, we're, we're, we're really solid between thirty and forty percent of our time. Uh, I believe, I'd have to pull up the records of our quarterly reports, but I think one time, uh, we were up in the, in the mid-fifties. So, so what might a board constraint around this one sound like? If we wrote a statement around this, the board shall not spend less than, uh, let's say forty-five percent of its time focused on student outcome goals in a board meeting.
You know, to me, uh, anything less than fifty percent is not, is not, I, I don't think that's, that doesn't show that we're really focused on it. So I, I would like it to be over fifty percent. And if that's not realistic, then maybe we could work our way into that. But, but anything less than half, I think shows that we're not absolutely committed to, to that kind of focus. In my opinion.
I agree with you, Norman. I, I truly do. And I, I would rather fail and aim high than aim low and surpass it. How do you guys feel about that?
I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to some of the, um, goals that we in February of 2020, when we, um, were, spent that Saturday, uh, working on, um, the goals for the district regarding reading and math and college career and military readiness. We set, we set some very high goals um, that we expect Dr. Scrivener and his team, uh, with our support to reach. And if we're going to expect high goals out of our staff, we should expect high, high goals out of ourselves. And so I agree that it shouldn't be anything less than fifty percent.
In case somebody else says wants to piggyback or jump in with a question. So what I've captured at the moment is the board shall not spend less than fifty percent of the board meeting times focused on student outcomes. So is that what I'm hearing?
So what happens if the, if we're, whoever's watching the time and we're going over or under, is somebody going to be there to tell us, okay, you're at forty-five percent or you're at fifty-five percent? How do we know that we are staying focused? Cause some of our meetings are pretty intense. So.
And, and that's a great, great insight, great question to ask. And, and so I want to, I want to continue thinking about this fifty percent target because here's, what we're looking at is the average of the time spent over the quarter. And the way that the board is going to hold yourselves accountable for this board constraint is did we or did we not meet our fifty percent goal, fifty percent of our time threshold and adhere to our board constraint that we put on ourselves. Okay. So with that, with our time tracker, uh, what we're because the educational system is so cyclical, there's going to be times that are just natural where like when Mr. Ball comes in, you know, start working on budget, we're just going to focus a lot of time on budget during a certain quarter. But then, you know, the next quarter, we may be really student outcome focused heavy with less of the financial side. So it kind of all averages out over the course of the year. But what we're doing for the self-evaluation, which may put us at a point where, uh, trustee Robbins just mentioned, this may not be attainable every quarter that we hit that fifty percent of our time focused on student outcomes. So with the language that I just captured, the board shall not spend less than fifty percent of its time. Would, I'm, I'm okay with that constraint, but would the board also consider, uh, spend not less than up to fifty percent of its time? Rather than setting that hard bar of fifty and then us not hitting the fifty. And then when we have to ask the question each quarter, did we or did we not? It's a yes or no. Not spend less than up to.
You know, Dale, this is going to be nitpicky, but
Yes.
Mr. Ball's budget, a lot of it has to do with student achievement. And maybe during his presentations, we could figure out how much of it is, I mean, maybe it's all related to student achievement. I, I don't know. But, uh, just because we're talking finances, I don't know that that necessarily, unless the Lone Star Governance says that, no, you can't, you can't classify something like that.
That's, that's spot on. When we're doing the time tracker, that's a great question, because when we're doing the time tracker, those are some other outcomes that we are time, that we are tracking time on, but they don't count towards the time that we're really being intentional and focusing on student outcomes. Yes, of course, in a natural board, natural occurrence of a board meeting, we're going to have some other outcomes that we're going to monitor around finances, around HR, around human, you know, facilities, school safety and things like that. Those are other outcomes that don't measure what our students will be able to know and do like our student outcomes.
And, and does this include workshops? I mean, is it both workshops and public meetings? Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. At this time that we're spending right now doing part of our self-evaluation, uh, around our particular board constraints is time spent focusing on the work of the board. Yeah. Yeah. So that does count.
So what, what we're doing now is, does that have anything to do with student achievement? You know, uh, I would think it does, but.
Well, certainly does. What we're, what we're trying to do now is to put those constraints in place that will keep the board laser focused on on student outcomes, on the mission, the vision, the values of our, yeah. So what would be some of those things that we would, if we were to hand these down to future generations of trustees, what would be some of the things that we would recommend to them to place on themselves so that they stay laser focused on student outcomes? To kind of think of the board constraints that you're placing on yourself in that lens. What would be the recommendations we would make to future boards? But we're going to use these on ourselves. One of those would be not to spend less than up to fifty percent of our time focused on student outcomes. Any other student or any other board constraints?
I would, um, uh, we, a constraint regarding staying in our lane as far as, um, the board will focus on governance and not on management. and not on management.
What I worked and spot on, I was making notes right here, but what I find a lot of our, the boards that I'm coaching uh, to hold themselves kind of in that checks and balances about uh, focusing on board work and not um, stepping into superintendent work falls under the integrity instrument page on unity. And under unity, I see a lot of boards who will set up, I see a lot, the boards that I coach have had a couple of them that have adopted a constraint very similar to that, that same line of thinking around the bullet point that's under master's focus under unity, where the board agrees that they will adhere to their board adopted constraints. And the board, uh, the board shall not appear to give operational advice or instructions to staff. Which is a, a master's focused behavior under unity. And so I had one board very similar to what you're uh, kind of alluding to in this, in this concept on this one focusing on the governance. The board agrees that in the last quarter, the board shall not, the constraint would read something like the board shall not appear to give operational advice or instructions to staff members, since our superintendent's here, the one that, that you're interacting with. Chew on that one. Give me some, give me some feedback on your thoughts on that.
So what, what does that, does that mean that, that we could only accept their recommendations? Or do we have the opportunity to ask questions and have a discussion?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. Ask questions, have discuss.
Uh-oh, lost you.
Boards where the board members have uh, kind of stepped out of the chain of command or the, the, the chain of communication of, and gone to staff members seeking work to be done or, or questions to be answered that could naturally flow through if our board operating procedure manuals, you know, clearly outline our, our communication chain is the board to the president, president, superintendent, then we want to stay adhering to our board operating procedure manual in that chain of communication. Yeah.
Okay.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent you from getting, seeking the answers that you need to be a data-driven decision maker. Absolutely.
So Dale, in, in that vein, one, one of the things that I really appreciate about Lone Star Governance is that for the first time, we're providing the community with really what actually the board's role is, which we have never done before. And they don't have a clue and I don't blame them cause if you don't express what it is and you're never, there, no one's ever gonna know. So any kind of constraints that we can weave that reinforces that with the, with the community, I think would be wonderful. Um, so what you mentioned, that I, I think could be great. And any others along those lines, I think would be terrific.
I want to kind of piggyback because you mentioned something earlier or uh, maybe it was trustee Phillips mentioned about having these community, these community forums and these town halls more, you know, more often and, and consistently. And providing that two-way communication opportunity. Uh, what is it? Is it something that's important with this board that we have no fewer than one of those town hall meetings quarterly or semi-annually? Or, you know, the, the, in Lone Star Governance, we want it at least annually. But is it important to the board? Would that be a constraint that the board shall not host fewer than quarterly or semi-annually? How often would y'all want to do that? Would that be a constraint that you would, like I said, you would hand off to future generations of board members who are governing Fort Worth ISD? That this is a behavior that has proven to be effective for us in Fort Worth that needs to continue? That would be a constraint that we could measure.
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be good. Now, I don't know whether it'd be quarterly or it could certainly be more than a semi-annually. I think maybe three or four times a year. I don't, I don't know. Maybe quarterly is, is completely achievable. Um, and, and I welcome input on that, but I do think it's gotta be more than every six months or it's gonna lose, lose inertia.
So we just pulled off four meetings in one week. And, and I use that term we very loosely because I know that that was an enormous effort on the staff's part. Um, in order to set all those up, to get the publicity out and to um, make sure that our community was aware of that. So I'm not in any way, shape or form suggesting that we should try to do four meetings in a week at quarterly. That, that, it's that, that's not a good use of, of staff's time. There, there are lots of things that they need to be doing. I, I would argue that one meeting quarterly would probably be doable, but I welcome staff feedback on that. To knowing that when these are set up, when we're publicizing, when we're putting these together. Um, you know, from, from my vantage point, what I think may be reasonable, may not be reasonable. And I want to know that. I want, I want to know that, that, that that is a reasonable request. And if it's not, then we need to consider that as we're creating constraints for our board. Because our constraints should not um, unduly burden somebody else.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do you want a response, Dale?
Yes, ma'am, please.
You know, we were actually discussing um, how well our board monitoring calendar has really worked out with the implementation this year. But doing our presentations at our board meetings. And I can see definitely us being able to support a quarterly meeting. Um, if we calendar it out, very similar to our board monitoring calendar, so that we're all on the same page of the date. And then that allows us to plan and be ready. Um, Barbara's team has all, they do a lot of work behind the scenes. Some of my team and then of course, all A-team, like we're always involved, we're watching, we want to hear. But for us, the communication that you receive back from our stakeholders, we need that as well. So to do one quarter, we, I don't want to speak for all them, they're probably I guess feel their eyes in back of the head, but we definitely want, we, we want the feedback, we want the communication. That's the only way we're gonna get better. And um, you guys had a great turnout, like the numbers each evening was just fantastic. So we definitely support that because we'll get better with that type of a, a venue.
Well, and I, I support, I, I, there is always a value in being in the same space with other people. Um, but I support the use of the virtual platform when possible because I do feel like that that affected it, that, that allowed people who would not have been able to attend because they needed to fix dinner or they didn't have childcare. Or they had just come home from work and they wanted to be in their pajamas, listening to this town hall and not have to go to an auditorium at a high school or an, or an auditorium or cafeteria at a elementary school. Um, I, I do like the benefit of, of being able to offer some virtual options for families and not just face to face because transportation issues are real. Time is valuable. And when you travel for thirty minutes to get to a meeting for an hour and then you travel back, it's really a two-hour commitment, not just a one-hour commitment. So um, the format doesn't need to be decided at this point. But I, I do, I, I really appreciate having a virtual option for those people who can better participate. I also want to make sure that anybody without connectivity knows that their voice is important as well. So if, there's a fine balance, um, but it's the balance that we need to find.
The trustee Darr, I really appreciate you with your comment about, you know, making sure that we don't provide undue burden. When we're looking at this, this one component on advocacy, it's really focused on board behavior. It's, it's about the board working with the superintendent to get out and to build that broad community ownership of our student outcome goals and our constraints. And to listen uh, to the, the heartbeat of our community to ensure that we're still aligned to our mission, vision, values for our community. And so it's really, this is more board work, but we can't do it alone. We're gonna have to lean on our A-team to help us work on that. But we don't want to take them away from students. I mean, the students are our number one, you mentioned it. It's our, our number one priority and what we need to focus all our energy on. Uh, but seeing to find that balance to strike this, uh, like I said, quarterly might be doable. Maybe not all, uh, doing them all at one time in one week maybe, but having one, we can massage this and kind of consider this. And I've captured the notes, but, but it sounds like we're, uh, an earlier comment from trustee Phillips or Robbins about us having these continue and to keep the momentum going, keep them consistent. Sounds like it. It would be some good advice that we could hand off to future boards about uh, you know, ways to open up this communication, two-way communication opportunity for school, school community.
Dale, I, I would jump in and say that uh, the school district seems to work in a fall semester, a spring semester, and then their summer. And it might be nice to give us the option of a trimester schedule.
Trimester, okay.
But I, I would leave that up to the pleasure of the board, of course, but I just, it just made me think when trustee Darr said, you know, want to make sure everybody's included, worry about connectivity, et cetera. If we do have this solid message that we do these every X number of days, then people can arrange for being in a place where they do have connectivity, et cetera.
Great, great comment, great suggestion. I had added that to that trimester works fine. And it's cyclical with our, our different grading periods as well. Any other constraints? Thinking in terms of what would be advice that we would give future boards uh, to hold themselves each other accountable? Cause that's what the board constraints really are. It's, it's our board members holding each other accountable to stay laser, laser focused on the mission, vision, values of our community. What would be some advice through the constraint language that we could hand off to future boards?
So Dale, from a racial equity standpoint, since all the, the data that we've been given recently indicates that race definitely makes a difference in student achievement, help us come up with something that could ingrain that into our board and, and engrain it into the board going forward. Uh, I don't know what that would be, but seems like that would be an appropriate thing to, to focus on.
Let's, let's do a group brainstorm on this one. The board shall not make decisions which would um, not honor racial equity within our school community is kind of the idea that I'm hearing.
The, the board will make decisions with a core emphasis on consideration of, can we word it positive? I, I think it's rights have to be negative, but I just, I don't, I don't, I, I'd rather it be positive that, you know, this is what we're doing because it's the right thing to do. This is our core.
Right.
I agree with that wholeheartedly.
Keep, keep, I didn't, I didn't write fast enough. Keep chewing on that idea.
The board will not, will not make decisions without considering equity. Well, it was better in my head than it's coming out of my mouth right now. Um, the board will not make decisions, decisions without looking through the lens of equity without um, considering the equity of the decision.
Lands of equity. The equity of the decision.
Again, if it doesn't say racial equity, I think that there's a different, different connotation there. And, and also like Toby said, let's, let's try to do it in a positive way. Um, I think that would be reinforcing. But I have no idea what it ought to say.
That's the, that's the one thing about the constraints themselves. Thou shalt not do this. We wanna, you know, that way we, when we ask the question each, each quarter, did we or did we not adhere to our constraint? But, but the racial component, yes, we need to put that in there, uh, make sure that we're considering racial equity. Is that what I'm kind of hearing from the board? I saw some head nods on that one, but.
I, I like the idea of including race, the word racial in there because I think that's critically important. And I've got to put my special hat, hat on right now. And I've been talking about equity for over thirty years as an educator because students with disabilities, their equity issues are real. And um, I don't know if there's a way to, to combine that. I, 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 I'm all in with a focus on racial equity. I, I feel like equity is a bigger issue. It, it, there's, there's more to the equity issue than just the racial equity issue. But that certainly does need to be a focus. Um, students with disabilities, there are equity issues that, that, that are real there as well.
Other comments? Make a notes?
Well, then we get into gender equity and socioeconomic status. And your zip code doesn't determine where you're going and all those things. So how do we, how are we all inclusive? Because I agree with you, trustee Darr, but how are we all inclusive? And Dale, do you have any experience with anybody that has been all inclusive? Or is there anybody that has written a constraint like this?
No, ma'am, this, this one is uncharted territory for me. I know this was a focus that we had when we talked about our superintendent constraints around equity. And we, we discussed the same thing. So uh, it's just natural that the board would want to put a constraint aligned to the superintendent's constraint in the same areas.
Perhaps we should wait until the entire board is here since we only have fifty-five percent of the board here tonight.
That's perfectly fine. Let me, let me capture the notes and share back with you kind of as a first reading and get some feedback on these. And then we'll massage them and bring them, bring them to you when you're ready.
Is that okay with everybody else? I, I just think it'd be so important to have us all here.
So at the moment I have four constraints with reserve. We can go up to five on this. We've captured really four big ones here.
Can you review what those four big ones are?
Here in my head, trustee Darr, I was about to say, let me, let me review them. Just keep the creative juices flowing.
Even if it's not like the exact wording, but just the, the general gist.
Okay. So the first one was the board shall not spend uh, less than fifty percent of its board meeting. From you that we kind of wordsmithed around the board shall not uh, appear to give, to give or appear to give operational advice to staff. The third one was um, the board shall not have fewer than quarterly town hall meetings and then potentially think, consider maybe trimesters on that one. And then the final one around uh, equity, the board shall not make decisions uh, without considering racial equity. Uh, students with disabilities. And then of course, we have some other areas that we want to consider on that uh, through the lens of equity or uh, having equity in our decision. Just kind of captured on that.
And, and with that equity, Norman, I, I don't know if you were thinking this, but you were the genesis of the thought. With that equity, it needs to align with what management and what the administration is, is doing all the way out to as, as Deputy Super Mollinar said, to the campus level. I wonder if we could do something like that because it would be strong.
Yeah, and I was just curious, what, do we have superintendent constraints in this same area? I mean, what was that? And shouldn't we be comparable with that or complementing that or whatever?
You'll hold with me just a moment. Let me pull those up. I've got a scrolling down. We had one on constraint number four for superintendent. Superintendent shall not operate without actively monitoring and working to eliminate the loss of instructional time, uh, which align to. Then we also looked at constraint number five, which was the superintendent shall not operate without examining the enrollment process and the data annually to ensure no inequitable impact on students of color. And then some of the constraint progress measures that went under there are focused on our retention rates of students of color, our percentage of students of color that are enrolled in certain pathways, and then also schools of choice, program choices.
Wow. Wow. Uh.
So any others? Well, Vice President-
Do we have a, um, a deadline for, how soon do we want to get these done?
With, with the Vision 34 team, uh, well, uh, I guess really Vision 34, uh, trustee Brookins, you and president Ramos are, are on that team and you're really, you're, uh, the ones who will kind of bring this to the board whenever you're ready for them. When you feel like they're ready to be introduced to the board and we kind of massage in our team meeting to really kind of work Smith these out and present these back to the board, but there's no timeline. Um, it's just one of the next steps that we set in this quarter. Uh, and since we're going to have this workshop, we'll start this conversation and then try to get these worksmiths ready to go for adoption at a future board meeting.
I, I think we have a, a pretty strong foundation so far. Um, but I, I'm like, um, vice president Jackson, uh, because we don't have the other voices in the room. I want to make sure we have their input as well.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, we are supposed to be a, a team, so, um, you can't have half the, half the team giving their voice and then the other be, you know, saying that we weren't there to put in our, our voices, so.
Well, let me, let me get these put together. Let me submit these to, uh, Dr. Scribner and the A-team to disseminate out to the board, kind of as a first reading, let you kind of chew on these, uh, provide some feedback on it, then I'll let our other trustees also have an opportunity to chime in on, give some input. Uh, and once these truly reflect what this board feels like, want to be the constraints that you want to hold yourselves accountable to, that's when we'll be ready for adoption. But I don't want to, I don't want to create constraints just to be creating constraints. I want these to be really truly working things that seriously, in all honesty, we can hand down to future generations of trustees that these are the things that we, the, the bumpers, if you will, uh, that we put on ourselves, uh, as a board during this time period, as we were, uh, rolling out Lone Star Governance and really implementing with fidelity that are helping us to be effective. And so as, as we move through, we may find that one of these constraints is really, uh, we're doing it anyway, but not necessarily, uh, not as strong a constraint. And we could add some others later and just replace them as we go. But just to get these propped up, uh, let me do that for you. Before we end, in the same vein of talking about constraints, the ultimate super constraint that, that we need to begin to consider in Fort Worth because we're now getting into our third and fourth quarterly review, where we've been at this one whole year, is to consider a theory of action that would define the work that we do in Fort Worth ISD. A theory of action is a super constraint, if you will, that we will, we will, uh, pass all decisions through that lens that defines and really captures the values that we have and that we hold true in Fort Worth ISD. And so it, it, a theory of action is an if then statement, so that is a cause and effect relationship. If we engage in this behavior, then we will realize our student outcomes. And so that is, I want you to begin to think because you're the ones who, who truly have your finger on the pulse of the vision and the values of Fort Worth ISD, what would be a theory of action that, that we will always pass every decision that we make through that lens of that theory of action? And, and that'll be in the next quarter or so, that I'm going to begin to kind of light the fire because that's going to take us to the next, uh, we're going to jump threshold into a master's focused behavior under our Vision 3 and Vision 4. So any questions or comments before I get?
I would, I would like that somehow to include the fact that we have high expectations for all of our students. And, you know, it doesn't matter if, you know, what their race is or what their abilities are or anything. We want them to perform to their highest capabilities. And if we do that, and then all of our students will be successful.
And we support them too.
With courage and support.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
What trustee Robbins said.
Plus one that. Yes, ma'am, I'm capturing all these nuggets. Y'all just keep throwing them out there. Because this, like I said, it's really, the theory of action is how we are always, it, it defines who we are. And, and as trustee Robbins mentioned, what really defines us is we are always in a relentless pursuit of excellence. I've stolen that statement from somebody, but we set high expectations for our kids and we expect them to perform at their highest, uh, capability and, but doing it through support, just trustee Brooks. Yeah. Anything else that we might add before we leave the topic? That's, that's-
I think we also set high expectations for staff.
Yes.
In order to ensure that students have the opportunity to reach their maximum potential.
Yeah.
So, so this, just to keep massage in this idea of the theory of action, if we do this, then what will we realize? When we set the high expectations and we, we push our staff and our students to perform at their highest capabilities while providing them support and they reach their potentials, then what are we going to realize? What's going to be the outcome? That's, that's essentially what the theory of action statement is trying to define. So it's really kind of an abstract thing. It's a theory is what it is. If we do this, then this is going to happen. Then we're going to test that theory. Every action, leadership action, board action is going to be measured through that lens of that theory of action.
I, I think if we, if we do this right, this is not only going to be something that we can pass down to board members to come, but other cities are going to be looking at us, the other ISDs are going to be looking at this as a, um, as a model.
Exactly right. And, and that's, that's, that's really, uh, spot on with the, with the thought behind this, the conceptual, uh, thought behind creating this theory of action and always striving to test that theory. If we do this behavior, then is it giving us the outcome that we seek? If not, then we need to tweak our inputs, if you will, to get us to that. So. With that, great conversations. Uh, any final words before I've captured the notes? And I'll, I'll get these put together and I'll get these to Dr. Scribner and Deputy Superintendent Molinar to disseminate out. Vice President Jackson, I appreciate your time, trustees and, and Dr. Scribner and A-team. Always enjoy my time here. Thank you for letting me be a part of this journey with you. Uh, President, Vice President Jackson, I have no further business to be transacted.
Well, thank you, Dale, and thank you for being here. I'm sorry we didn't have the full board, but guess what? That means you get to come back to an instant replay.
I'm looking forward to it.
All right. Um, I'm going to hand it over. Any trustees have any comments this evening? Just go ahead and go in order of your, your district if you do. We'll start with you, trustee Phillips.
Uh, no, ma'am, no comments at this time.
Trustee Brookins?
Uh, no comments at this time. Thank you.
Trustee Dar?
No comments, but I do appreciate this conversation as well. So thank you to my colleague for engaging in honest and open dialogue.
And thank you, trustee Dar. Trustee Robbins?
No comments. Thank you.
And I will just say, uh, I want to thank Principal Aura Angel. I was out at lunch the other day and I watched her walk in and promote DeMaCray, uh, kindergarten and pre-K to an eating establishment and working in the entire poly area. And it's principal leadership like that, that we are developing, and I was just amazed to see her out. And what was really cool is to see the reaction of the people when she, when she spoke to them and talked to them about pre-K. Even people that didn't have children in school volunteered to help. And, and we've talked about that tonight. It takes the entire community. So I just want to give a shout out to her, and I'll hand it off to Dr. Scribner.
Thank you very much, um, Vice President Jackson. Before we wrap up, I just wanted to, uh, do a couple of things. First, uh, recognize, uh, this board of trustees, uh, for their great work tonight and last week, uh, uh, being leaders really here in Lone Star Governance across the state. The advocacy work, the community forums were very well received. Tonight's development of board constraints really will lead us into the master's level. Uh, tonight is also a bittersweet, uh, night. We want to congratulate a member of our A-team, uh, who is moving on to a new chapter and our chief of operations, uh, Mr. Art Cavazos is retiring after 15 years serving, uh, the students, uh, faculty, staff and community of Fort Worth ISD. If we could give him a round of applause, I'd really appreciate that. We thank you, we thank you, Art, for your service. Uh, we wish you wonderful retirement and, um, a prosperous next chapter of your life. Felicidades amigo. It's wonderful to, um, to have met you and to work with you and I look forward to continuing our, our relationship moving forward. That's all I have, um, uh, Vice President, uh, Jackson, and, uh, we will, I'll throw, turn it back to you to adjourn.
Well, I would say that is a great note upon which to adjourn. And Mr. Cavazos, thank you for being here with us for 15 years. And on that, we adjourned.